Cool.
All right, the recorders are on.
It was dark. It was fun. It was fun. It was different. Different than our usual.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you for joining us for the Village Board meeting for the Village of East Aurora for November 17th, 2025. If you could please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and moral.
Thank you. Can I get a roll call attendance, please?
Trustee Lazikas. Trustee Cameron.
Here.
Trustee Vijay.
Here.
Trustee Flynn.
Here.
Trustee Raby.
Here.
Trustee Shear.
Here.
Mayor McCurio.
Present.
Six present, one absent.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes of the Village Board meeting for November 3rd, 2025?
Motion.
Moved by Jeff, second.
Second.
Second by Ernie. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Approved. Can I get a motion to approve the payment of the abstract for November 17th, 2025, for the 2025-2026 fiscal year with a total of $987,736.60?
So moved.
Moved by Molly, second.
Oh, second.
Second by Jeff. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Approved. So this will be our first speakers in communications. We'll have another one at the end of the meeting, so you'll have an opportunity to speak then if you think of something that you aren't thinking of now. If you'd like to speak on something, I'm going to ask that you raise your hand. When recognized, come up, tell us your name and address as we record all the meetings, and then we'll go through it. But we're going to start with the historic district feasibility study proposal by Carner Development.
Good evening, Mayor, trustees. Thank you for the opportunity to be here. I am Clinton Brown, Clinton Brown Company Architecture, 403 Main Street, Buffalo is the location of our office. I'm here to inform you that Carner Development Corporation will be funding a feasibility study that we will undertake for listing an East Aurora downtown commercial historic district located on Main Street in the National Register of Historic Places. And if that feasibility study proves sufficient as a first draft, Carner Development Corporation will, again, at its own cost, fund the next step in the process, which is preparing the nomination for listing the National Register Historic District in the National Register of Historic Places. A National Register Historic District does not place requirements on owners of the buildings in the district unless they seek the advantages of tax credits that are associated and available with the district. The National Register Historic District does not have any town or village requirements associated with it. Building owners do not answer to anyone new. The State Historic Preservation Office has affirmed that any local laws regarding historic preservation do not apply to National Register Historic Districts, and that listing the National Register Historic District will not impede property owners from continuing on as they have. Property owners do not answer to anyone new when they improve their property with their own money. There are two goals for Carner Development. First of all, having this historic district will allow them to access historic tax credits for their substantial investment at what is known as the Liberty Building. We did this for Todd Stein at the Bank of East Aurora to convert it into the event space it became. The second reason is they believe this is good for tourism and for the wider business community of East Aurora, because having access to the historic tax credits will attract other investors like them to reinvest, rehabilitate, in some cases, restore the buildings within the district. The process of undertaking the National Register nomination has already begun with a walk-through East Aurora with the State Historic Preservation Office representative, who's never been here before. It was absolutely floored by what a wonderful village this is from an historic preservation point of view. This is a man who's worked all around the world and had never been to East Aurora. We research information about each of the buildings, how they came to be, what their uses have been, and we look in public records, archival records, to determine whether or not these buildings contribute to the historic character of the historic district. We prepare a nomination form, which describes the district and why it complies with listing criteria for the National Register of Historic Places, which is interpreted by the National Park Service of the Department of the Interior. All of our work is conducted from the public right away. We do not go onto anyone's property. We do not go into anybody's property. We're not interested if people want to have us look inside their property. We say, no, thank you. The benefits of a National Register Historic District are really primarily enhanced community pride, enhanced real estate value, and for municipalities, therefore, real property tax value, and national significance. You have national significance because of the Hallmark movies. This is national significance because of the amazing place in which you live. There is building code compliance flexibility in the New York State and international building codes for officially designated historic buildings. The idea being to retain their historic character while at the same time having the same level of public safety as if they were a new building. And there is a protocol to do that. Most, and I know this village is true, most building code officials are familiar with this because they have been working with the Department of State on this for 20, since the Pataki administration. And then finally, the historic tax credits. Someone who applies for the tax credits, you don't have to, but someone who applies for the tax credits and spends less than $2.5 million gets 50% of their expenditures back as a refund from New York State and as a tax credit from the federal government.
I'm sorry, Clint, you said 50%?
50%.
I thought it was 20% state, 20% federal.
If it is above 2.5 million there, most people will not be spending more than 2.5 million. The buildings aren't that big. But if you do spend more than 2.5 million, it is 40%. That's correct.
Okay, and below 2.5 million, they get 50% back in tax credits? So is it 25 and 25?
It is 30% state refund and 20% federal income tax credit over five years. And the reason the state made the credit refund was to attract out-of-town investors to invest in New York State who might not pay state income taxes. So to encourage that, the credit comes back as a refund.
Straight-up refund, okay.
So we're working with someone from New Jersey investing in Jamestown. He doesn't have any state income tax, but he sees Jamestown as a place worth investing in. So there's an example.
So he still gets it back?
Yes.
All right, now do you know, do you know, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Well, it was brilliant to do that, and it's been very effective. And this might be a place worth investing in for out-of-state investors because it's well-managed. It's an attractive historic village, so there could be an incentive.
So do you know if the state is planning on changing that on April 1st?
No, there's no incentive at this point to change the state legislation enabling the state historic tax credit. It has been automatically reviewed. I was part of creating it in Governor Patterson's regime. It had a five-year renewal. It's been renewed every year. He wanted a sunset because it was 2008, 2009, and the recession. He wanted a cap on properties that are eligible for it. They have to be eligible census tracts, and a $5 million cap on the state tax credit across the state. Most of those don't apply here, but there will be a transition in some census tracts. However, there's a two-year grace period. And there is a mechanism of applying for the credit under the current law in case it changes within that two-year period, or someone can't get their project together.
And a certain percentage of the project has to be exterior?
No, that's in the homeowner, these are good questions. That's in the homeowner credit, but not in the commercial credit.
Okay, thank you.
And finally, there is no downside. There are no minuses for this. There is no one new to answer to for property improvements, and there's no requirement for public access. There's no requirement for the owner whatsoever with this national recognition. In fact, using their own funds, they could demolish their building in a National Register Historic District if it fit the planning and zoning of the municipality. So there's absolutely no downside. And that's so important to emphasize that this is just an opportunity for people to invest in and get their money back sooner than waiting for the market to pay the rents to get the money back.
That's why it's such an attractive proposition, right? And I was so concerned that we'd be foisting some sort of requirements and restrictions on the property owners, which I don't want to do. But you're certain, I assume, that they can do the work on their place as long as they don't take the tax credits. They can do whatever they want on their place.
That's correct.
No oversight at all. And if they take the tax credits, then they have to apply with their project to, to SHIPO?
Through SHIPO to the National Park Service. The National Park Service and the IRS are the arbiters of the commercial credit program. And there is a long history of what complies and what doesn't comply, so no one needs to be surprised. And there is an appeals process if an owner has proposed something that the staff think does not comply with the Secretary of the Interior's standards for rehabilitation. We've, our firm has won all but one of, I think, a dozen appeals.
Oh, wow. You can challenge it. There's an, there's a.
You can challenge. There's a fair court.
Successfully, yeah.
Yep, there's a fair court. You try not to do that. You can start work without getting prior approval. It's risky. But you can start work unlike the homeowner credit on your building and then decide to go for tax credits. We connected with Todd Stein late in his project, and yet he had the right instinct to retain the interior of the building, and he got the very lucrative 40% at the time. He just fell a couple of months short of the 50%. I'm here as your pleasure to answer any questions. There's one other thing I forgot to mention. There will be, again, hosted by Carner Development Group, an open public information process throughout this procedure to make sure everybody is reached out to and informed, their questions are answered. The timetable is that the project has started, and it will likely go to the State Board for Historic Preservation at its quarterly meeting in June 2026, seven months from now, just because that's the time it takes to do this. Our firm has, I think, listed about 8,000 properties on the National Register of Historic Places. Sometimes it feels like you've had to talk individually to all 8,000 to make sure they're comfortable. But I'll give you an example. We have about 5,000 property owners in the Elmwood Historic District. I think 14 objected to the listing, which you're eligible to do. Because we had reached out to the public, engaged them, that's a residential district mostly. They were all interested in the state historic homeowner tax credit of 20%. So we're quite comfortable working on this. We want you, with the elected officials, to be the first to know that this is going on. And I'm available, and I know Rachel Kuduski is available, to answer any questions at any time in the process.
So you're talking, what, about 60 businesses from the library to the Mandela School? Both sides of the street, right?
Yes.
But just on Main, with addresses on Main?
Yes.
Okay. And then, do you need any sort of percentage, or, you know, 51% of the business owners to agree to it? Or, how does that work? What if?
That's a good question.
What if 80% of them are against it? Like, how do you navigate that?
It will not go forward. It is in the regulations that if more than half the property owners object, the listing will not proceed. It'll go to the National Register, but it'll sit until all the if and when a majority of the owners.
Come around.
Come around. And it is an obligation of those who object to file their objection as the owner.
That's my question. How do they object?
And we will let them know that. And the state will let them know that. So in terms of the notification to the owners, just before the nomination goes before the State Board for Historic Preservation, so it's likely in March, for the June meeting because of their scheduling, they will send each property owner on a roll provided by the Historic Preservation Commission, a letter notifying them that their property is being considered for inclusion in this historic district. It'll tell them about the tax credits and other incentives, and it'll tell them the procedure to formally follow if they wish to object. So it's open, it's transparent. Everybody gets a chance to weigh in.
No surprises, right?
And no surprises. Yep.
So do we, Rich, do you know, do we need any sort of certificate of appropriateness for these folks if they don't want to do work? Right? So if they don't want to get the tax credits, they can do whatever work they want if they're part of this, and there's no other restrictions on the village side? Okay. I mean, I always preach that East Aurora's charm is our charm, right? Our character, and a lot of that comes with that historic corridor there, and the look you get as you drive through, you know, small-town USA. So I like the idea of giving people incentives to maintain that and continue it, but I don't want to force them to. So this sounds like a nice tool.
This is all carrot, no stick.
Yeah.
And if it were to be considered as a local historic district, you would be making that decision as the chief elected a body. That is a power you have if you decide to do it.
So is this you letting us know that you're going forward with it, or do you need something from us?
Just to let you know that we're going forward, we're here to answer any questions or concerns because you'll be the first ones called if there are, and we want to know that we've got your backs.
Can you get your contact information to myself and Shane?
Yes. Be glad to. I'm available to answer any questions or comments?
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you, Clint.
Please do.
Thank you.
Mary Ann Colley, Historic Preservation Commission. I would just like to add that the Historic Preservation Commission unanimously supports the establishment of a National Register Historic District on Main Street. Also, while digging in the archives, I found that on November 15th, 1992, so it's almost exactly 33 years ago, the then-mayor, John Pagliaccio, had a proclamation, "Whereas a frequently cited quality-of-life advantage of the Village of East Aurora is the existence of a core business district which not only provides for a convenience center for commerce, but is also a tangible center of the community, which helps enhance a sense of community among residents." And then he goes on to list all the firsts that happened in East Aurora, all the things that are wonderful about the Main Street District. And then he says, "He proclaims it the historic Main Street business area. And along with the concurring members of the East Aurora Village Board, I hereby encourage merchants, property owners, and residents to take note of the historic nature of said business area and enhance the historic atmosphere of the area and promoting commerce therein." So I am very happy that after 33 years, we're having something very tangible to support these ideas for a business district.
We're going to memorialize it. Thank you, Mary Ann. Yes, Rachel? Come on up.
Rachel Francis, 225 Sycamore Street. I have three things. First is a thank you, giant thank you for all of you and the parts you played in memorializing Cicero Hamlin. Especially Steve was a shepherd of all the hurdles that were thrown his way, and he spoke very eloquently and elegantly at the memorial. And Jeffrey was a miracle worker. I don't know how you did that, but it's so impressive, and it looks like it's always been there and always should have been there. So thank you. The other two things are ideas. Got to have something new to work on, right? The first one came from Chautauqua, and we were listening to a speaker talk about how you can use the arts to improve your community, and one was traffic calming. Guess what I thought of right away? Not just me, but there were four East Auroras in the audience at the time, and we got together afterwards and said, "We have to do this in front of Barbell." You know, it's a traffic nightmare there. It's a safety nightmare. So here's the brilliant idea, and my terrible printer printed out. I went to AI and said, "Make a chicken wing 3D crosswalk, okay?" So it's going to go between Barbell and Main and Hamlin, of course, with the DOT blessing, right? That's where the problem is, and I think you have to do something. If it's 3D, it's going to stop traffic a little bit, slow them down. They're going to say, "What is this in the road?" And I think, I think Barbell and Main and Hamlin might want to chip in, right? Anyway, that's my idea. Traffic calming. The crosswalk at Pasquale's, the crosswalk at the Circle are not being used. It needs to be right where the danger is. So that's my idea, number two. Number three is an idea for the 3rd of July. You know I'm passionate about that, and if any of you have been there after everybody leaves, it is an environmental disaster. I don't think I'm overstating that. It's bad. And what made me think about it again is the article in The Advertiser, thank you, Advertiser, about the Borderland Green Team. And we can do exactly the same thing. We can be environmental entrepreneurs here and create a green team that will hand-sort every bag of trash. Water bottles are a giant problem. I've seen them. They're half-drunk. It's a waste of water. It's a waste of plastic. It's an environmental disaster. And so I want to encourage you to maybe start now and put together a green team. Will they be volunteers? I don't know. Here's how you can pay them. You ready? Cut the fireworks a little bit shorter and use some of the money raised to give these, this green team, just a little bit, just a little bit of money. But I really want you to take this seriously, maybe less the chicken wing than this.
With Maureen? Thanks, Rachel.
Do you want the AI chicken wing?
Sure. Do you have more than one copy? Give one to Clark on your way by, will you? He owns the Barbell.
Didn't we, didn't we ask the state about a crosswalk?
Two ideas and a thank you. Thank you very much.
Few years ago?
Thanks, Rachel.
Yeah.
And they refused to do it. The state did. We requested one right here.
Well, there's several there. The crosswalk there is, all the other crosswalks have ballouts, and that one doesn't. And then there's parking on both sides. So it's either, it's even wider than where the ballouts, ballouts are. So you would have to get rid of several parking spots on both sides to make it clear enough for people to see that people are coming out into the crosswalk.
I think we looked at the wet, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
And it's, it would be, I don't know if the state would approve it because they designed Main Street to have ballouts and crosswalks.
I thought, I thought they had told us no, because we had asked.
I don't, I don't, that was several years ago.
I thought, I thought we got a no from the Safety Committee because it was three lanes that you have to cross there, and the idea was putting a crosswalk in a dangerous area.
It's actually four lanes if you count the parking spots. I mean, it's a long distance.
But I think that's the upshot, as I recall, is that it's, putting a crosswalk in an unsafe crossing does not make it a safe crossing. You're supposed to put crosswalks in safe crossings. It's not like a deer crossing.
And like the Circle Crosswalk and the one up at Willow, they have the ballouts. So you're only crossing two lanes and not.
But you could add a ballout there. I know, I know we went and walked it and looked at it, and we talked about the west side of Hamlin comes across kind of over by the fire hydrant, where there isn't parking anyway. And there's no parking in front of the main door of Hamlin there at the corner. There's a full, probably almost two-car lengths before the parking spaces start. So you already have a space there, and if you came across and got rid of maybe one or two on the fire hydrant side, you know.
Just a perfect example, and the chief probably remembers this too, is we had an older gentleman struck by a car in front of Pasquale's, literally within 50 feet of the crosswalk. So I think it's a great idea to have crosswalks that are safe that people use. Look, when people get out of their car, they're going to the Barbell, they're going straight to the Barbell. They're not blocking, have locked down the street to cross over to come back. And they just, it's human nature. They just, you know, unless the chief's going to have his guys out there ticketing everybody for constructing traffic as they jump out with their kids running across the street. I don't know.
What we've learned, too, is a lot of it has to go into federal statutes and standards, and they stand to lose funding when they do things that aren't to those standards. They've, when I've, when I just asked to light up crosswalks a couple of months ago for the Safety Committee, they gave me a big no. They didn't want to hear anything about it, and they said studies have shown they're not necessary in those spots, and there was no talking to them about it. So the state rules supreme on that road.
Jesse.
Hi, Jesse Griffiths, 1955 Boise Road. I would just like to state that regardless of what the state says, regardless of how, you know, tracks them. What's more important? People or cars? If people are just doing what people are going to do, shouldn't we design the streets around what people are going to do? I might just, might suggest, might suggest guerrilla tactics, too. Maybe some people go buy a couple of traffic cones and sneak them out in places, you know? Just don't tell anybody.
Make their own crosswalk there.
Make your own crosswalk. Why not? Very often, you should do all kinds of fun stuff like that.
It's not doable. The question is, are people going to use it? And is the state going to?
Well, we know the state's going to say, cars are the most important thing. Who cares about people?
No.
It's a DOT.
What if somebody gets hit? What if somebody gets hit and we put a pile on?
We ought to do something that has, we ought to just say, you know, people are more important than cars, just as a general rule.
Yeah. That's right. Again, the problem, I think, is that crosswalks don't make it a safe crossing inherently.
Yeah.
No, people, people will walk into crosswalks looking at their phone, assuming there's a force field around them, protecting them. But when there's 5,000 pound and bigger vehicles going 30 miles an hour.
With the driver on their phone.
Maybe they should go 20 miles an hour. Yeah, with the driver on their phone, right.
Just go back to horse and bucking them.
Joanne?
We couldn't put speed bumps on there if we wanted to. Ryan?
Joanne, Ryan, 211 Porterville Road. I have been here before about the, you know, of course, crossing Pine Street. And I was laughing. I said, "Maybe I'll call it the Beef on Wick Crosswalk." But I just want you guys to be aware, and this really upsets me, that on Election Day, ironically, I was driving home from voting, and there are three little kids, Parkdale kids, that have to cross Pine Street to catch their bus. How dangerous is that at Warren? The bus stops at Warren, and I talked to Shane to look both ways. Kids don't look both ways. These are elementary and middle school kids that need to cross. I did not call the school because I keep talking about it, but for young kids to have to cross Pine Street to catch a school bus in the morning when it's dusk out, or if it's raining, and we have 18-wheel trucks flying down Pine Street, you need to go and start to look. I talked to Lindsay LaRigo. It's back and forth and back and forth. I don't think anybody's going to be happy. Nothing's going to get resolved until something happens. But shame on us that we are letting little kids cross Pine Street nowhere to be safe. I think we need to figure out something to do, if it's the state, if it's the county, if it's our village. But I wouldn't want my kids or my grandkids crossing. And you know what? These kids are, like I said, they're Parkdale kids and middle school kids. Maybe somebody should be. somebody should be calling the school and figuring that out. But that's ridiculous. So, that's what I wanted to say. You can call it the beef on Wick. I'll throw some salt on it too. Thanks.
Thanks, Joanne.
Yeah, the horse, right there.
So, I know we're looking at getting four-way stop at Fillmore and Pine, right, with the county, and you talked to Gina?
I talked to the engineer as Jeff and I were walking with them on Maple, which we'll touch on later. And the engineer themselves were taking a look at Pine Street, and she believes that the only intersection that would have enough traffic to dictate their, meet their requirements for a stop sign would probably be Gerard.
Like a diagonal to Lawrence, or...
She didn't...
Are they close enough?
She didn't clarify that.
Like Center and Shear? You know, it's kind of a jogs over.
Yeah. I doubt it would be a diagonal intersection. I don't know how they would design that.
How do they deal with the corner there?
But she recommended that you guys request a traffic study of Gerard and Pine instead of Fillmore because she doesn't feel that there's enough traffic on Fillmore to meet their requirements. So...
And she lives in the village, you said, right?
I believe so, yes.
How about a Warren Drive too? I mean, there's a, instead of Fillmore, maybe a Warren Drive because there's more kids on Warren.
She didn't feel there was enough traffic coming off of Warren either to meet their standard.
If we do a traffic study, let's not have it be done in the winter or the off-season.
Well, that's what I recommended. I recommended that the board hold off to do that until April, May, when the weather is better and there's more people out and about, if not June, to do the study then, instead of like we did last year with the study in December when it joined the project out there.
And then also, we want to lower the speed limit coming into the village from Girdle, possibly.
Everyone's going to check on the 30 mile overall.
Yeah, get that down. So, that is done. Excellent. Didn't know that.
Awesome.
I kind of like the idea of it being at Gerard because then it slows them down after the turn before they get to that stretch. And then if they're coming down the hill, they'll have been at the stoplight anyways at the top of the hill.
Makes coming out of Lawrence safer because I have to travel Lawrence regularly to go check on my 94-year-old friend.
Or to go over to Gerard.
Back off of Palmander, and I cross there all the time, and it's not, it's not safe. You have to quick-hit the gas, go. That would slow people down. I would make that Lawrence Avenue Gerard section safer.
So, the county, the person you talked to said she was down with it. She agreed it probably needed it. She recommended the traffic study. Did she say do it this spring, or can she do it now?
I don't want to put words in her mouth.
She recommended we apply for it.
She felt that Gerard had enough traffic that it would meet their standard to put in a four-way stop with the crosswalk.
Right.
And she agreed too that better weather timeframe would be the best time to do that study.
So, it's already too late in the season to do it now?
I mean, you could, but, you know, I don't know what their timeframe is to turn it around and do the study. It's already, you know, mid-November. If we wanted to do it in decent weather. I mean, we could do it now and hope there's enough, but...
That's, I think, part of the thing, right, was that over the summer, there are a million events. The farmer's market is in high swing.
There's a lot more people in town.
Right. May gets us in that, and school's still in session. I mean, everything's kind of happening.
I don't want to just miss their standard doing it in the middle of December instead of waiting until May, when it's nice and there's more people.
100% agree.
Okay. All right. Let's definitely do that.
Holly Machieski, 218 Center Street, East Aurora, New York. So, I just have two questions about this. Shane, is there a written report that she's given you that maybe you could share?
No.
Okay. Well, besides that, then.
Oh, thank you. You could tell who I could.
It's not like I'm tall. Anyway, so, okay, we've identified this big problem and children at risk. So, between waiting for county studies and state studies and people to tell us what we can and can't do, what is something we can do in the next couple of months through the winter to keep these children safe? Is it a crossing guard, or what can we do? We know what we can't do is rely on the state or paint our own lines, I guess. What we can't do, what can we do? That's, I would hate to see us stand up here and have this discussion right now and have something terrible happen with a child. And it is such a, I mean, we know how busy it is, and we know it's not safe for them there. So, what can we do instead of what we can't do? That's my question.
Chief, is this guy, I think you can connect with Brian Russ at the school on?
Yeah, I'll talk to Brian, and I'll find out what the transportation routes are and how many kids they have in that area and what their crossing requirements are. I don't see why the kids can't wait on the other side of the street and wait for the bus to activate the red lights, and then the bus driver crosses them when it's safe like they've always done. I don't know why they have to cross over that street.
Yeah.
We have a resident expert here on the board that could give us a little bit about school district safety, but I think that would probably be the way to go, is to keep the kids on the side of the street they live on until the bus has stopped, the lights are activated, and the bus driver deems it's now safe to cross.
That's the old...
That's typical way. Yep.
Jeff, can you redo their busing routes?
Oh, sure.
Thank you.
Spare time, yeah.
All right. Thanks, chief. Who else? Miss?
Good evening. Lynn Kamara. I live on the corner of Pine and Lawrence, so I have a lot to do with this discussion. I was almost killed the other morning crossing. I walk every morning down to Singing Ponds and around Fireman's Field. It's a nice little morning walk. And since the street has been repaved, they did not extend the sidewalks all the way to the bend as it goes into Porterville. And you cannot see what's coming around the corner. That's how I was almost hit. And so, as you're considering ways to make that area and those intersections safe, I agree with everything that's been said. I watched the school kids. I actually wait, stopped my car in the middle of the road to let the kids go by because nobody was stopping for them. There's three kids that walk there every morning at the same time. But I don't know what we can do about extending the sidewalk, but it seems like a simple issue. And people walking from Pine Street down to Singing Ponds from that side, you simply can't see, or you have to walk across those people's front lawn.
Lynn, just to clarify, the county didn't shorten it, right? They just didn't extend it when they did the project?
It was the same. It was not the same.
The same as the way it was?
No, it's not.
Oh, it is shortened.
It went to the curve. It went past, I don't even know what the number of the houses. Two down from you, Joe?
There was a problem with that. It was, I think the end of it was out of their right-of-way, so they couldn't replace it. They could remove the old one and redo the lawn, but I think, if my memory serves me correctly, that the last few feet of the sidewalk weren't in their right-of-way, so they couldn't redo new ones on private property.
Well, maybe we can consider the right-aways then. I don't know. But that's a really bad... As long as you're working on that area, I think that's to be considered. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Lynn. Who else? Shelby?
Shelby Deck, 299 Pine Street. So, it's important to note that the following comments reflect my role as the spokesperson for a much larger group of concerned citizens. So, as you all well know, all summer long and into this fall, dozens and dozens and dozens of East Auroraans have taken time to attend multiple Planning Commission meetings and then have stood right here at this very table to ask over and over again for a pause on Alliance Homes' proposed subdivision, three homes on Zero Pine Street. We came to you time and time again with grave concerns about wastewater, pedestrian safety, the removal of heritage trees, increased traffic, and environmental impacts. We kept at it, not because we love you guys and we love attending these meetings, but because something just wasn't right. Nonetheless, despite months of significant community objection, on October 20th, this board approved Alliance's minor subdivision application. In the East Aurora Village Code, Section 227-8, a minor subdivision is defined as, quote, "Any subdivision containing two or three lots," as defined in Section 285-8, "and not requiring the extension of public streets and/or infrastructure." The 194 feet of sewer main extension that Alliance needs under Gerard very much requires an extension of infrastructure. That's 194 feet of excavation, 194 feet of utility coordination and neighborhood service interruptions, 194 feet of new curbing, sidewalks and driveways, 194 feet of backfilling and repaving, and 194 feet of road closures and traffic snarls that will reroute a residential area already at the tipping point of its pedestrian safety, as we have heard here this evening. Village Code makes it very clear this project and its attendant sewer infrastructure need is indeed a major subdivision and should only ever have been applied for and reviewed as such. We, the citizens of East Aurora, now find ourselves in the unenviable place of schooling our elected officials and employees on adherence to our basic Village Codes, obeying the laws of this village, and being accountable to the community you purport to serve. So, what is next? If no immediate action is taken tonight by this board in the form of rescinding this approval or something similar, members of our community are prepared to file an appeal in State Supreme Court in Erie County. Our attorney is prepared to commence the lawsuit. If successful, the court would issue an order directing that the procedural deficits be corrected and the application be reprocessed and then reconsidered, this time as a major subdivision. We would welcome any answer or reason why the codes were overlooked and why this was not treated as a major subdivision project. This is an issue of apparent non-compliance that is going to require immediate answers.
Thank you, Shelby. Rich or Chris, you guys want to address this point?
I don't think there's going to be litigation. Simple as that.
What do you mean by that, Chris?
Well, you've said you're going to sue the village. Certainly understand that, and I have no problem with having in front of a judge.
Okay. That's great. Our attorneys will be in contact. Legal papers will be filed this week, and so I guess any questions will be directed, can be directed at our attorney. Thank you.
Thanks, Shelby. Who else?
Holly Machieski, 218 Center Street. I really didn't, anyway, plan on talking about this, but I don't understand what exactly just happened. I think we're supposed to be working together. Whether they've decided to retain an attorney or not, there is a chance to make this, to change this situation, I would think, with answers to the questions about procedural processes. Just an idea, but my thoughts. Thank you.
You good? All right. Thanks, Holly. Anybody else? Jesse?
Okay. Jesse Griffiths, now here is the tree board chair. Hopefully, a little bit less contentious. A little bit. I noted in Part F in the official considerations tonight, we're talking about designating some trees as dangerous for removal before the moratorium is lifted. Part F mentions that those trimmed over 50% be included. But unless they are dangerous, we feel that allowing the moratorium to be circumvented for aesthetic considerations would seem to make the entire moratorium feel kind of a joke. You know, why are we stopping them if we can just change our minds and take a tree down because we think it's ugly? Now, there are old sugar maple trees at the end of Linden that are hollowed out and could be considered dangerous. We don't really have a problem with those being removed. I guess they've lasted for many years, and they didn't just become dangerous. So, I guess I'm not sure, you know, why we need NICE to hurry up and remove them.
I think once we identify them as dangerous, then we're obliged to address it.
Clear. I mean, either way. And I guess maybe this is for Chris, a question. Does the moratorium legally extend to Hamlin Park, or is it only for street trees and utility work?
I don't have it in front of me, but as I recall, it may reference to street trees.
Okay.
It did.
I just wanted to make sure. I mean, we don't, we don't mind the removals that have happened thus far. We understand the need for the removals that are happening in the park. I just wanted to make sure that we weren't stepping on any toes there. You know, we saw Jeff just last week stick his whole arm into the hollow of a sugar maple, and there's kids around. So, we don't really mind those trees being removed. I did want to warn you guys that Jeff let us know that the 41-inch diameter beech tree is going to be coming down fairly soon, maybe this week, because it's going to be dry. Again, it's not long for the world. It might have lasted a few more years.
I love that tree.
And a lot of people do, so don't be surprised if we get some calls on that one. It's, it's got the beech. Anyway, there's plenty of problems. There's plenty of reasons for it to be removed, unfortunately. And then I just wanted to say that, you know, we know that the removals are disappointing, and for many folks, it's genuinely emotional. We know that these trees have been, you know, really seemingly a permanent part of our shared landscape there in the park for, you know, quite a few generations. This kind of thing is happening now because most of the trees in that north end grove are 50, 75, 100 or more years old, and nearly all of them now are showing signs of decline in various stages. Their age, combined with the environmental stressors, you know, being in that park, means that we're seeing the natural end of that cohort, and many of which were planted around the same time. You know, despite the word "park," it's not really ideal for long-term tree health as it stands. Soil compaction, you know, tons of people walking back and forth over them, mower damage over the years, foot traffic, and shifting usage, you know, basketball courts might ring a bell, all take a toll on trees. If we want that area to stay the shady place that we know and love, we need to actively support the trees. Soil aeration will help with compaction, and expanded mulch rings would create natural spaces that walkers will subconsciously avoid. Just, you know, they see a pile of mulch, they think, "Oh, must be a garden," and they'll just naturally route themselves around it. These kinds of things can make a real difference. We, you know, the tree board are committed to working with the Hamlin Park Committee for replanting, but with a plan in place. What we want to avoid is, you know, planting 100 trees now and having the same thing happen down the road. That means, in part, staggering new plantings, perhaps only adding a few each year, so that the trees age in stages, and we end up with a mixed age canopy rather than all of them ending up at the same age at the same time. And that would help ensure a long-term continuous canopy. But it also means adding a realistic maintenance strategy, getting that in place, so that the trees we plant today are thriving 50, 75, or 100 years from now. And to that end, we'd like to see a dedicated line item in the village budget next year moving forward for specifically tree management in Hamlin Park versus just a general, you know, Hamlin Park line item. Tree care is specialized work, and we believe it really needs its own clear funding so that we're not fighting for it every year. We know that there are screech owls raising young in that park every year. We'd ask that the upcoming updates to the master plan, in whatever form that takes, prioritizes explicitly the park's green spaces. It's not just there for pickleball. Trees may look like permanent fixtures. We look at them, we don't notice year on year, you know, the changes that happen. But they are living infrastructure, and that requires attention, planning, and ongoing care. So, thanks.
So, Jesse, just to talk about your perspective, tap into your wealth of experience. Would you recommend a variety of trees be planted in there?
Yeah, absolutely.
Right?
Absolutely. There's an overabundance of sugar maple in the park right now, and they're the ones that are really hollowing out. There's also, you know, there's not very many beech left, but there were a number of those as well.
Originally, it was oak, I think, wasn't it?
And there's a number, there's a number of oak. But yeah, we'd absolutely mix, mix species, ages as well.
Do you think it'd be better to mulch around each tree?
It would, yeah.
Would that make it look too manicured and not as natural?
You know...
Would it be worth it?
I think it'd be worth it for the trees. It's also, it's not really a natural space. There's no brush, there's no, you know, it's trees amongst grass.
Yeah.
And so, you know, we have to take into account that it's a park, it's a manicured place, or it should be.
That's true. Probably make it look natural, it's like, you know, sort of a natural mulch and not one of the dyed, you know...
Yeah, we're not, yeah, we're not talking bright red dyed mulch.
Right, the bank parking lot.
We talked with Jeff, you know, they shred plenty of woody material as they're working, so we'd use that, we'd offer that as mulch.
Is some type of planting schedule with species something we could ask the tree board to put together?
That's what we, that's what we'd like to do as a part of the, an overall master plan, a management plan for that park.
There's a massive management plan document that's been worked on for several years. It's what, 200 pages or something?
Well, we, yeah, we've added all kinds of stuff to it over the years, and it's mainly been focused on the, the street trees, but we want to, we think Hamlin Park probably deserves its own attention.
Yeah, I think there was a section about sort of forestry.
Yeah.
Great, great vision, Jesse. Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Appreciate it.
Thanks.
Joanne Ryan, 211 Porterville Road. I'm just following up with what Holly said about Shelby speaking. I, I guess my question is, is that if, from what Shelby was speaking about, about this subdivision, if it was filed as a small subdivision or a large sub, it should be a large subdivision, is the Village, are we paying for all the sewers and all the stuff, work being done on Gerard? I mean, if it was filed incorrectly and they have to extend the infrastructure, I just lived through this on Pine Street in Porterville. Now, now we're going to rip up Gerard Street for this development to happen. I guess my question is, is that it's in the Village Code, she cited the Village Code, and we all should be working together to preserve the right thing, to be doing the right thing. And just listening to this again, I'm thinking to myself, here's somebody that's going to build three houses, which of course I've said to you guys, I don't have problems with development. Two houses I was happy with. But if we have to now extend sewers and everything, that's, I'm not, I don't want to be paying for that. And is that what's going to happen? Is that, according to the code, it states that if it has to be extended, which I know there was only one house on that, and I know somebody else spoke here to the planning committee as well here about their concerns about the water and the drainage and things like that. I, I just, I just can't believe that we can't even, I mean, you guys represent all of us. And I just, I find it frustrating to say that, listening to this and listening to Holly and stuff like this, we're supposed to be working together, and that's what we taught all of the kids in East Aurora. And I just find it amazing, if the Village Code says that there's a change in the infrastructure, which I believe there is, then we should be thinking about that. Okay, thank you.
The problem is that there's a disagreement over what is considered a change in infrastructure. Number one. Number two, the request was for the board to basically rescind a prior motion without giving the other side an opportunity to be heard. Basic fundamental due process in this country is you give both sides an opportunity to be heard. That was not going to be provided, nor was it requested to be provided by the speaker. They wanted it done now without giving the other side an opportunity to be heard. It went in front of the planning board, it came in front of the Village Board. Those, that specific issue has never been raised before. It wasn't raised in front of the planning board because I was present at that planning board. And there were not dozens of people there at the planning board meetings when this was discussed. And things were discussed at quite great length. And there have been concerns. Most people were concerned about the trees, they did not want three homes there, they only wanted two. Well, the code allows them to have three homes there. It is, I get it that people don't want to have it. I get it that people don't want the trees removed. But the code doesn't provide for those types of restrictions as is currently written. And unless, Rich, you can tell me, you know, address the infrastructure issue. My understanding is there's nothing from the Village is going to be doing anything about infrastructure.
That is the understanding of our office. The aspects of the extension is just applied to the lots itself. The facilities providing such utilities isn't actually changing that infrastructure as the extension goes into the lots.
Directly to the homes.
Not the street, not along the street.
Shelby Deck, 299 Pine Street. I appreciate the legal due process schooling. And no, Alliance Homes is not here, Mr. Romanowski is not here, Mr. Hopkins is not here, and Mr. Sorgi is not here. This does not really have so much to do with them as it does with the Village Code. And that, when you go back into the meeting minutes from the planning commission over the summer, where people attended the meeting minutes, and maybe there were dozens and maybe there's not, but smokescreen right now, right? That the meeting minutes, because I've read all of them, there is one line on record, one line about, first of all, the meeting minutes are sorely lacking in any kind of fundamental rigor, detail, record-keeping, or anything like that. So they're very, very frustrating to read when something like this happens. And I have advised our attorney that they will also find the same. What has occurred here is that it's Village Code. It's Village Code. The Village Code says "infrastructure." If a sewer line extension is not infrastructure, what is? That's the first point. The second point is that neither the planning commission nor this board of trustees flagged it, and that Alliance Homes was allowed to come in and get this approved. In the meeting on the 20th of October, I stood here and I said, Alliance Homes is not the enemy. Because they're not. They're not. They're absolutely not. When I first had my first flock of chickens, one of my chickens ended up being a rooster. And my friends, everybody knows this story, one of them ended up being a rooster. He ended up attacking my kids, he wasn't very nice, and he wasn't being a very nice rooster. And I invited a friend over with a shotgun, and I said, hey, Jeff, could you just come over? I'm going to dig a hole and we can shoot this rooster. And he looked at me and he said, Shelby, I'm not going to shoot a rooster for being a rooster. So I'm not here to shoot Alliance Homes for doing what they do. And believe me, I believe Alliance Homes definitely knows they've got a sweet spot here in East Aurora. They've got a Village Board and a, and a planning committee that isn't paying attention, isn't following code. This is about code. This is about a major subdivision, not a minor one. And a month ago, Shawn Hopkins stood here, minor subdivision, minor subdivision, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And now here we are. And I sat in that backseat, and I remember when the conversation was going on, out of turn, I spoke out loud and I said, get sued. Stand up for this Village that Clint Brown, Clint Brown, superstar, a superstar of historic preservation, gets up here and says, boy, this Village, isn't this amazing? This place, this out-of-town people think that East Aurora is amazing. Peter, you said, what did you say earlier, the magic of East Aurora or something? I should have written it down. East Aurora, it's fabulous. Everybody thinks East Aurora is fabulous. Yeah, but we don't have anybody minding the store. Nobody's minding the store, you guys. Somebody still hasn't fully explained what this sewer extension actually is going to look like. I read a letter today in the file from Carmina Wood. It's all about the sewer extension. That, I didn't pull the 194 feet out of my suite behind. It was all about that. Who's paying for that? Where's that coming from? And if that's not infrastructure, what is? What is? This isn't about trees, this isn't about traffic, those have all been, you know, bandied about now. Meanwhile, Alliance and Hopkins and Sorgi are doing their thing. But again, they're just being the rooster. It's up to us, unfortunately, to make sure that you guys are doing your job protecting this national treasure. And that's why we've gotten to the point that we've gotten to today. We're filing an appeal. Does anybody have anything, any good reason, any explanation about actually what this infrastructure, this sewage line infrastructure actually looks like? You guys looked at the folders, you looked at the files, we've been at this now for For months. What is it going to look like? Nobody really answered Joanne's question. What is it? What is a sewer line extension? Who can answer that for me?
I believe it's already been addressed by code, that there is none.
There is, I'm sorry, could you say that again for the record? There is no sewer line extension?
I believe it has already been addressed by code. Your, your concept and your consideration...
I'm sorry, Chris, what code?
Well, the one you're trying to cite. Look, it's...
No, I have the exact wording from the Village Code.
I reviewed the code.
What code are you talking about?
The section you're talking about in terms of definition of a minor subdivision.
And what is that? What is the section I'm talking about? And can you quote it? Because I've got it written right here.
Well, if you've got it written right here, you don't need me to quote it again.
In the East Aurora, Village Code, section...
Ma'am, I'm not going to get into a debate with you. If your attorney would like to give me a call, I'll be happy to talk to him.
Really?
Yes.
Well, he will be giving you a call, Chris, and I'm sorry, this, why are you being so antagonistic? I really am having an incredibly hard, and why am I only talking to Chris?
Once, once you threaten legal action, then our attorney advises us on how to proceed, Shelby. All right? We're not going to say anything that's going to get the Village sued or affect the lawsuit, so...
So I also have to remind all of you here tonight, this is not a good look for any of you as elected Village officials. And this isn't a threat. I mean, I'm sure that when you uphold, when you took the oath of office, just...
All right, thank you, Shelby.
This just gets worse and worse. I, I don't mean to be antagonistic, I just am wanting us, I'm sorry.
I said, well...
Well...
Maybe you do. But we appreciate your comments.
Because when we get up here...
Shelby, we appreciate your comments. We've heard you.
I stink!
You've said, you've said what you've had to say.
Well...
We've heard, we've heard it. All right? I think we're good.
Well, not really, Peter. Not really at all. Not good. Not good.
Anyone else?
Joe Chimera, 170 Pine Street, East Aurora. I have sat on boards on both sides, and I have made policy and rescinded policy and changed policy at the direction of decision-makers and policymakers. I think what we're asking you to do is make an executive decision to postpone or review this particular issue of the sewers and who's going to pay for them, which is a concern to me, at some future date, so that the construction company cannot get started without due process, as you said you require, and making sure that we're protected from our point of view and you're protected from your point of view. A simple postponement and review of what is necessary by your attorney and our attorney and whoever else should be involved is all that needs to be done. Seems to me to be a pretty simple decision. Question?
No. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
So, Rich, we don't actually have a sewer system in Erie County, correct? Yeah. So the Village isn't paying for any of this? Just to clarify. Thank you.
And is there an extension of the road that needs to be done? In the road?
In the road, I believe, yes. But I can't, I have another documentation.
Can we get clarification on that some? I mean...
We can, yes.
Okay. Well, let's try to do that then.
Yeah, I'd like some clarification on that.
I'd like some clarification on that. Yeah.
I'll get that information. I'll talk to Chris, his attorney, and then have the due process be... Congratulations.
Thank you, Rich.
Thank you.
All right, that closes our first speakers in communications. We'll have another one at the end of the meeting, moving on to public hearings. We currently have a public hearing open for electric motorized scooters and bikes. Does anyone from the public want to speak on this before we close this public hearing? All right, I wasn't sure. All right, can I get a motion to close a public hearing regulating the use of electric and motorized scooters and bikes at 8:07?
No move.
Moved by Kristen, second by Jeff. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approved. Public hearing is closed. We also have a public hearing currently open for a local law to amend 285-44 of the Village Code, sign regulations. Anyone from the public want to speak on this? Can I get a motion to close the public hearing 8:08 PM?
No move.
Moved by Grace, second by...
I'll second.
Molly. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approved. That one is closed. I get a motion to open a public hearing to consider an amended site plan application from Michael Anderson of Abstract Architecture of 203 Main Street for a natural gas standby generator to be located in the rear of the property to serve the first-floor tenant at 8:08 PM?
No move.
Moved by Grace, second.
Second.
Second by Ernie. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approved. Public hearing is open.
Michael Anderson, Abstract Architecture, 313 Broadway, Buffalo, New York. As you're well aware, I'm the architect for this project. We submitted to the Building Department a revised site plan. Basically, we're logjammed on the site. Once we had to bring in the gas generator, or the desire to put the gas generator on the site, we would have liked to have hidden it, but with the narrow nature of the site, proximity to the property line, its location was pretty much dictated to us. But I am here to answer any questions you may have.
Good. I think we've got a good handle on it. Anybody else for Mike? No? Thank you, Mike. Anyone from the public want to speak on this? All right. Can I get a motion to close a public hearing at 8:09 PM?
Motion.
Moved by Jeff, second.
Second.
Second by Molly. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approved. Can I get a motion to open a public hearing at 8:09 PM to consider a local law to extend the moratorium on unnecessary tree trimming in the Village?
No move.
Moved by Kristen, second.
Second.
Second by Ernie. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approved. All right. Chris, anything you want to, this is what, 180 days we're going to extend it, but we don't expect it to last that long because...
Hopefully not. You've had your meeting with NICE again.
Three.
Yes, but one last week, I understand. So, once I get all of... So once I get all of that information, then I can hopefully do the final-
Memorialize it, and then we can-
Yeah, we were waiting for that, so.
Very good. Anyone from the public want to speak on this? Holly?
Hi, Holly Macheski, 218 Center Street. I just have a question about this, basically from the Tree Task Group. We've been trying to find online and that the current ordinance, the way it stands right now. So that would have been like the ordinance that was worked on and then things suggested by the Tree Task Group. And NICEG not in there yet because that hasn't been as far as we know. Is there like a current one that we can read? Or is it only the old one? Is there one, like in revision somewhere? The ordinance concerning the trees?
Like an updated draft?
Yeah. Can we get that?
I have the most recent draft.
Oh, great. How could we get that?
You can just send me an email.
Okay.
Or you can come in or whatever.
Okay. I'll stop in in the morning and grab it from you, so. Okay, great. Thank you.
Thanks, Holly. Anyone else want to speak on this? Jesse?
Hi, again. Jesse Griffiths, Chair of the Tree Board. I sent you all an email in late October concerning a few things that we wanted to bring up, kind of in relation with the Pine and Gerard kerfuffle. I thought I might take this time to maybe go over those four points that I had made in that email. Number one, we were hoping maybe we could see some tree preservation guidelines for new development. There's some information scattered about, but it's hard to find and not emphasized anywhere. We think maybe, you know, things that outline requirements for construction near trees, like the guys on North Street and Maple. Canopy retention targets for new site development and post-construction replacement standards for all projects in areas of the village. We'd like to see considered perhaps tree planting requirements or incentives for developers, ensuring that new projects contribute to the long-term health of our village canopy. The Mid-Maine Overlay District already requires two new trees be planted for each living tree removed. This requirement could be expanded or removed, or improved, rather. Perhaps adopting a tree replacement ratio or something like that, the new planting requirements tied to tree canopy or caliber size removed. Perhaps some tax incentives or abatements for preserving existing trees. I don't know. Third, we'd like to see an integration of tree and habitat considerations into site plan review and zoning decisions, recognizing trees as part of the village's essential infrastructure. Right now, you know, my goal isn't really to further bog down developments and red tape, but to make our hopes and expectations concerning green space in the village much clearer than just the, you know, quote, "Hey, did somebody remember to ask the planning board about the trees?" For many years, it wasn't really a consideration there, and now it seems kind of informal. Maybe we'd like to formalize that a little bit more. It might be useful for, you know, requesting a tree preservation plan or canopy coverage analysis as part of a regular site review. Maybe stormwater management plans could explicitly credit retained trees for infiltration and transpiration functions. And lastly, we'd like to see further support for the tree inventory to help guide dated-driven decisions about where preservation and planting efforts are most needed. There are obvious neglected areas of the village, but they may not be visible without objective displays. Getting this online and available to members of the Tree Board and the public will help everybody better help with plantings and maintenance. I know that we had an intern help collect much of the data for the tree inventory, and I believe Hamlin's trees are included there, but I believe that we'll need a sign-off, at least from an arborist, in order to take advantage of it the way the state requires grant applications to be written. The tree inventory has to be done, quote unquote, by an arborist. And I know Jeff's working on it, but, you know, he doesn't have a lot of free time. But I guess what I'd like to see is, you know, are we going to be able to formalize that tree inventory before too much longer? You know, ideally, we'd love to be able to get that online and available to the public, you know. Ideally, anybody should be able to click on a tree and request maintenance, you know, like a 3-1-1 type of service. NICEG mentioned to us last week at our meeting that they're building an app so that people can work with them directly. Luke, the arborist at NICEG, mentioned that they're using Fulcrum an application that I've been using with a free account for at least 10 years to, when I went down when Matt was there in the office and pulled the GIS data off it. You know, are we sure that we're getting our money's worth with, you know, using Wendell to provide, you know, GIS contracting services? Or are we able to, you know, can we get this stuff online? Is it going to be something that's going to be useful? Anyway, hopefully we can get a little bit of a discussion about those points before we finalize the changes to the ordinance. All right? Any thoughts, questions?
So Jesse, you're thinking modify the code where appropriate regarding like the preservation guidelines and the planning requirements and incentives and the-
Yeah, I just feel like, I feel like at least some of the, some of the concerns on a project like Pine and Gerard, you know, I know that trees were a significant part of the, of the issues that were raised by residents, you know, sewer lines and everything. You know, I can't, they all left. I feel like if the ordinance or ordinances, you know, different sections of the ordinance were improved or maybe made more clear, it might, you know, make it a little bit easier for us as, as folks involved in the village to make these kind of decisions and, you know, help clarify things.
Maybe hard code some of the guidelines so that-
Yeah, or even just-
Easier to-
Yeah, make it, make it-
Hold them to it?
Sure. Have us, you know, give the ordinance some teeth so that when people come and say, "Hey, you know, this tree's 150 years old. Don't take it down." You know, right now, Chris has a point where there's nothing in the code and you can't, I don't see it being fair to retroactively change something on somebody, but. But-
It's tough with that.
Yeah, so let's, let's try and maybe take this opportunity with, with an update to the ordinance to take a broader look and say maybe we can clarify some things and help out.
Since it appeared you were reading that off of the- Can you just-
It was, yeah, it was emailed. I can-
We have that email.
Yeah, okay, great. Can one of you guys forward it? You ought to forward it, okay.
Somebody.
Yeah. So Kristen, as the Tree Board, oh, you sent it to the Village Board, me and the advertiser.
Ooh, you found it.
Yeah. So maybe Kristen and I sit down with you and the code-
Sure.
And we see where we can kind of-
Yeah, that'd be great.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just good thoughts.
All right. All three of us.
It'd be fine.
Sounds great.
All right. Thanks, I appreciate it.
Thanks, Jess.
All right.
Appreciate you.
Thanks.
All right. We're still in the public hearing for the extending the moratorium. Anybody else want to speak on it? Can I get a motion to close a public hearing at 8:18 PM?
So moved.
Moved by Kristen, second?
Second.
Second by Jeff. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approved. Official considerations. Can I get a motion to consider approving a local law regulating the use of electric and motorized scooters and bikes? Nobody? All that work? All the year and a half we've been working on bikes and scooters, and now we're just going to-
So moved.
Grace just moved it down there, so.
Three years.
It was quiet, but she said it.
I'll make the motion.
Ernie's moving it, and Grace is seconding it. And we're going to do a roll call vote. Steve? Kristen?
Aye.
Ernie?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Molly?
Aye.
Grace?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Motion passes.
Woo.
It's a long time coming. Can I get a motion to consider approving a local law to amend 285-44 of the Village Code, sign regulations?
Motion.
Moved by Jeff, second?
Second.
Second by Molly. Further discussion? These have both been thoroughly, thoroughly discussed. All right. Roll call vote. Grace?
Aye.
Molly?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Ernie?
Aye.
Kristen?
Aye.
Stephen?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. That motion passes. Can't tell you how happy that makes me that those two are off our plate.
And me.
Can I get a motion to consider approving a determination of non-significance pursuant to the State Environmental Quality Review Act and the matter of site plan application from Michael Anderson of Abstract Architecture of 203 Main Street for a natural gas standby generator to be located in the rear of the property to serve the first floor tenant? Moved by Steve, second?
Second.
Second by Kristen. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approved. Congratulations. Can I get a motion to consider approving an amended site plan application for Michael Anderson of Abstract Architecture of 203 Main Street for a natural gas standby generator to be located in the rear of the property to serve the first floor tenant?
Motion.
Moved by Jeff, second?
Second.
Second by Molly. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approved. Congratulations again.
Thank you very much.
Good to see you. Can I get a motion to consider approving a local law to extend the moratorium on unnecessary tree trimming in the village?
So moved.
Moved by Kristen, second?
Second.
Second by Ernie. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Approved. Can I get a motion to consider permission for NICEG to remove dangerous trees in those trimmed over 50% as listed and approved by the DPW general foreman? Jeff stole.
Motion.
Moved by Jeff, second? Second by Steve. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Approved. Can I get a motion to consider referring to the Planning Commission December 2, 2025, a minor subdivision rezoning application from 260 Quaker Road LLC for 270 Quaker Road? Moved by Steve, second?
Second.
Ernie? Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approved. Can I get a motion to consider approving a peddler solicitor permit for Michael Yohi to operate a horse-drawn carriage? Moved by Steve, second?
Second.
Second by Kristen. Further discussion?
We've had no issues.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approved. And I have a motion to consider permission for the Police Department to apply for the New York CARES UP grant for employee wellness.
Motion.
Moved by Jeff, second?
Second.
Second by Grace. Further discussion? Pat, I just want a quick reminder of what this is about.
This is a 24-month grant. It's $30,000 each year for two years. Basically, this is through New York CARES UP, which is through a couple of different state organizations, New York State Health Department and DCJS, being two of the big ones. And what they're looking for here is to follow the CARES UP model and come up with employee wellness. And one of their major emphasis is suicide prevention of officers and dispatchers. So we did apply for this last year. of officers and dispatchers. So we did apply for this last year. We were not successful. Not only were we not successful last year, but Erie County wasn't successful. So there's 15 awarded statewide. We do our best on it. I might ask somebody who knows a lot more about grants than me to help look it over before I submit it. And
You know anybody?
I gotta say, this board has a lot of experts on the staff. So, but that's the gist of what that is.
Good. Well, I mean, do you get like letters of support from like the town or other municipalities or organizations? Does that kind of thing help?
Well, to be honest, a grant like this, because there's only 15 of them given out, should really be coming from the county level and then dispersed amongst all of the agencies in the county in a large training setting. I voiced that concern with the county, but since there's
It's not enough money.
About 13 days left, they're like, yeah, maybe next year. So I've got a lot of the work done and I'd like to submit this this year and see what happens. West Sonica was successful last year.
Did you get feedback on your grant? Did they give you your score and comments?
No, it was a rejection. But I have talked with the West Sonica chief and the person who wrote his and looked through and see why they were successful in Erie County as a whole. Agency wasn't, and neither were we, and neither was the city of Buffalo and other agencies. But, I mean, I would like to see this maybe offered on the county level to all police officers in Erie County instead of me trying to obtain a grant for 18 officers, because I feel a lot of times agencies our size just aren't being considered because of, for whatever reason. So we could reach out. If the county actually applied for this and not everybody around the county, we could get somewhere, but that's not how it's being done. Hopefully, we will change that going forward and we can get them to do it next year for everybody.
Very good. Any other comments from the board? Moved by Jeff, second by Grace. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Approved? Good luck, chief. And I get a motion to consider setting a public hearing on December 15, 2025, for a special use permit from County Development Group at 670 Main Street to convert part of the 1675 square feet of the first floor commercial space for an indoor golf recreation facility, along with an accessory use as a bar. Moved by Steve, second.
Second.
Second by Kristen. Further discussion? So what part of this was already reviewed by the planning commission, Maureen?
The planning commission reviewed this, and then I believe at the meeting, they talked about the bar and the bar was updated in the plans. I did not hear back from Liz if there was any other updates, but I believe the bar is the only update. Is that correct?
And you're good with it, Rich? You don't think we need to send it back to planning? All right. Any other discussion from the board? Moved by Steve, second by Kristen. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Approved. Public hearing is set. Can I get a motion to consider permission to advertise a bid for a sidewalk plow?
Motion.
Moved by Jeff, second by Steve. Further discussion? Jeff, anything?
Yeah, we're looking to get another sidewalk plow. The one we have is over 20 years old. It's pretty tired. It'd be a great backup when we get the heavy storms to have two machines out.
It was on the capital.
Yeah, it was on the capital plan.
Number one, and we do have the money saved and reserved, and that process has already gone through. He was hoping to get one on through Sourcewell, but because that didn't work out, he had to bid because of the cost.
And we'd get this in when?
It's next.
Yeah, I'm hoping end of December.
All right. Any other discussion from the board? Moved by Jeff, second by Steve. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Approved? Can I get a motion to consider approving the Goldfisses as members of the East Shore Fire Department?
Second.
Moved by Steve, second by Kristen. What's that? Further discussion?
Yeah. No? I'm good. That's great.
I didn't say their names separately because I'm not positive. That's not a typo right there.
That's how it was spelled for us.
Gaberio?
Well, I'm not saying it's right.
Not Gabriel.
I'm just saying I was given that spelling.
All right. I'll just say the Goldfisses. Moved by Steve, second by Kristen. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Approved. We appreciate them. I get a motion to consider setting a public hearing to consider a local law to amend the garbage code once the updates are ready.
So moved.
Moved by Ernie, second.
Have you decided a date for this?
Nope, not until it's ready.
Okay.
I just want to get it done faster, because our goal is, as soon as, so as soon as it's ready, I'll put a legal notice out and I'll let you know when it's set.
I asked her to expedite it as best she could, because there's a handful of folks out there who maybe have too much recycling to fit into a bin over two weeks. And they're like, what do we do? Burn it? Like, what do we do with it now? So we're trying to come up with a a change in the contract and we have to do it this way. And we're hoping maybe six weeks, right? Four to six weeks, you're thinking, optimally?
I would love it to be four.
And then hopefully, it'll be like maybe 150 bucks for another year, for another can for them to buy if they're really in a crunch. But we want to give them at least an option for the folks who are, you know, it's not a one-size-fits-all, so we're trying to help out the people who don't align with our current garbage contract.
Second.
All right. Seconded by Grace. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Approved? Can I get a motion to consider setting a public hearing on December 15, 2025, to amend Chapter 165 lighting outdoor of the village code?
So moved.
Moved by Grace, second.
Second.
Second by Kristen. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Approved? No new business? No old business? Second speakers in communications? Joanne? I wasn't wincing. I wasn't wincing.
No, I'm laughing.
Yes, Joanne?
I have two clarification questions. Is someone gonna call the school district? Are you gonna call chief of the school district about the buses? I just want to say that in the East Shore advertiser, a couple of weeks ago, there was a letter to the editor from a bus driver saying how they ignore the signs, the yellow and the red lights.
Drivers do?
Yeah, the drivers have done that. And it was a letter. Jeff shaking his head. It was from Lane Law, a person that drives for one of our buses. So I think that when you do talk, because I was gonna go to the school board, but I appreciate it would be better if it came from you. I think that they need to change the route so that no, like these kids, just even elementary kids, to cross because of these huge 18-wheeler trucks coming down Pine Street. It's very, very dangerous. So if they say, you know, oh, well, we will put the, you know, the lights on and everything, because the bus parks on, on, oh my God, Matt Martin.
Warren.
Oh, thank you, Warren. It parks on Warren and the lights are on, but nobody is on Pine Street. That's the problem. So
So the kids are crossing Pine over to Warren to get the bus?
Yes. And they're elementary kids.
That makes no
So I think that we need, it's so crazy. And I would have said something to you guys months ago, but I guess I was coming
That's a good school board thing to bring up. It's the school's routing, their bus routing.
I know, but I think it would be more effective if
Yeah, but Joanne, they'd probably listen to you more.
I think they'd like you.
Jeff, I know you did.
I did.
I taught in school.
A student feedword.
So I'm just saying, you know.
A, A.
You can type. Okay, so, so I don't know, so
I have a meeting with the superintendent in the morning. I just, I just scheduled.
Okay, that would be great. And you could even use my name. He knows me quite well, so. I worked for him for many years. Okay, the second question is this. And again, I kind of got muddled and I'm kind of, I guess, getting a little lost. I'm here again just to say that our building codes are very, very old. They're 65 years old. And I'm hoping that this board starts to look at some of these building codes. And, because I called the town about some land on Pine Street Extension. And I was, I'm nervous about that being developed. And their laws are so different than the village laws. They need 125 feet versus 70. And I just would like to bring that to your attention, that the building codes here in the village are 65 years old. It's pretty old.
Joe.
What?
Joe Trapp is just gonna chime in.
Oh, okay.
The village attorney, just to clarify for the folks.
Joe.
You're gonna go to the mic?
Joe has to dress that way for every meeting. It's our dress standard, our dress code. It's all tuxedos from now.
So
Yeah.
The, just so you guys are aware, because it's a common point of confusion, because I want, there are two separate things, zoning and the codes. Let me start with the codes. Is it good practice for municipalities to look at and update all codes? Absolutely. You guys can take solace in the fact that New York State enacted in 1981, effective 1984, created the New York State Uniform Fire Prevention and Building Code. It is the set minimum that all municipalities have to follow. It is updated every couple of years. We're just, Rich, a new one coming out now?
December 31st.
December 31st, a new one's coming out now. That takes precedent to ensure that there is a state minimum standards for everything. If we have an old code that doesn't comply, too bad, so sad for us, the state controls. And our codes, in fact, if we want to even pass something that has a higher or more restrictive standard, we have to get it approved by the code council. The state set up an entirely separate body to review and address changes to the code and to even have discussions as to code interpretations. So that's one element. The speaker raised about 90 to 120 feet uniform code, sorry, the New York State Uniform Fire Prevention and Building Code, which is also called the uniform code. The uniform code doesn't get into that. Those are questions of zoning. So if you guys want to have smaller lots, bigger lots, in terms of size, that is all local, that's all under your zoning code. There's a lot of legal history I can give about that, but they're, they're everybody thinks of them together. Because you think of a house as one complete thing, but they're two very different legal concepts. And so those are the two things you need to address. How do we want to deal with our zoning? And then the building stuff in terms of safety is out of your hands. And if you guys would like to enact higher or more restrictive standards, we can do that as well, but the safety net on that is provided by the state. Thank you very much.
Yeah, and the reason I'm bringing this up is because of the house on Maple and North. And also now I just noticed there's another house on Elmwood and Oakwood behind the Jacobs House. It was Ann Leary's old house. It's, I was calling, I went by today and I was like, oh my God, it's like huge. And I just, and then there was a house also in Gerard that was redone in the last year. And I just think that it's our opportunity to make sure that we are following, doing something so that we get the right amount of tax money for these properties that are being re, I don't know what you would say, redone. Because we have a place at the lake. And at the lake, this is what has gone on, is that they take these great little cottages, they raise them, and then they build these huge, huge houses. But they say to them, well, you know what? This was a cottage and we just revamped it or remodeled or whatever. So I just think that we should be aware of what's going on in the village. And it's kind of upsetting to me when I see, you know, I go down Maple Street and I look at that and I think if I live next door, across the street, it is enormous. And that house was, when that house was raised, I remember thinking to myself, that foundation is bigger than the house. And I was like, what's going on? You know what I mean? And I couldn't figure it out. And to me, it was very obvious that that's what happened, because it's now here. It seems like it's becoming more of a common practice in our village.
Yeah, we talked about
Yeah, we talked about it last meeting, you know, same thing. It's like because we're now a highly attractive
Yes.
village. People want to live here and they don't want to live in a little Cape Cod with one bathroom.
Right.
And they'll take the Cape Cod down and put up a larger home on a small lot, out of character with the rest of the neighborhood.
Right.
It's not the town I grew up in where, you know, people had normal-sized homes mostly and we, you know, there wasn't this fear of people coming in with a lot of money and
You're right.
knocking down a 1955 Cape and putting up 3,000-square-foot modern home. And so we have to tighten these up and perhaps even increase lot sizes frontages so that, you know, you
And green space, because the house on Maple, there's no lawn at all, very little. And I think that the other consideration would be the green space. But like, I look at the house on Oakwood right now, that it was a gorgeous, gorgeous home. And it was, you know, an old home and these people, I don't know who it is, they have every right to do what they want, but, you know, if I lived behind them, I would have been very, very upset, or next door, because you can't see. And even the new build on Walnut, it's now out farther than all those other houses. I don't know if you guys have gone by that, but it's long and it's like, you know, like real deep. But if I built a house, one of those new houses, there's a gray house and they have three gorgeous windows, big bay windows. Now they're looking at siding because it's so far out, like the house, it's extended beyond. So if you were on your porch and you could look right down the street, you can't do that anymore. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention. Thanks. Have a nice Thanksgiving, by the way, everybody.
You too. All right, anyone else? Speakers in communications? Don't do it. Don't do it, Jesse. All right, come on up.
Jesse Griffiths again. I've been thinking about the housing thing for a bit. I just wanted to make a point that if we don't do some, you guys are right, that East Shore is a very attractive place for people to move. And people want to, you know, remodel and embiggen their houses. I think what we have to do is we have to consider the fact that if we don't do something to increase the density of housing in the village, then what's necessarily going to happen is that we're going to be increasing the density of the sprawl outside the village, which nobody generally wants to see either. Just, you know, something to consider. On the school buses, I think the swing arm needs to have spikes or some other such.
I like that.
Other such threatening things.
Cameras, chief.
Eh, camera, come on.
Swing arm on a school bus, if it catches a car go by on the camera, is that? Can you give them a ticket for that?
Spikes, you know. I don't know if Blade Law has cameras.
Like a thing, a TNT, like from Looney Tunes or something?
There was a program
I had to do some kind of
that school bus companies or schools
I don't know.
get a grant to put cameras on the school buses for violations. And then you would get sent a civil violation. But nobody around here
What about like a big club? You could like attach a big club to the end of it, too, like a baseball bat, maybe. Totally off-topic, maybe you guys know, maybe Chris knows, who's in charge of painting fire hydrants? Like maintaining that? Is that county, village? Can we take, can we send some to you that probably ought to get
Yep.
cleaned up, because there's some ugly ones out there? I also just wanted to note that I'd love the fact that there was a consideration about somebody with a horse-drawn carriage after you mentioned that we should just go back to horse-drawn carriages. But the real reason, what's that? Yeah, there you go. The real reason I'm standing up is I just wanted to double-check and make sure the consideration F was talking about dangerous trees and those with 50% canopy removal. And I was hoping to remove the 50% from the stuff that was done while the moratorium is still in place. Just because it's a moratorium. And if we can just make a declaration that we don't like these ones.
Well, the village isn't bound by the moratorium. The village
Oh, I know. Yeah, I understand that. But if we say, hey, we're not going to remove these trees, and then we're going to have NICE do that work, because they're under the NICE lines. And we're gonna say, well, hey, NICE, you guys can remove those, because they're ugly, which they are. It kind of, to me, it lowers the, like, the power of the moratorium.
But no one else can cut trees.
Yeah, you know, it just looks bad.
But were we cutting them because they were ugly, or were we cutting them because we didn't think they were going to survive because they got more than 50% cut of them?
Oh, they're probably not going to survive. That's true. But it doesn't make them dangerous. And we're saying they were, you know, declared dangerous, you know, the other ones can be declared dangerous. They could be removed.
Yeah, they're the four on King Street. Where
There's the ones on King Street and the ones over on Oakwood and
Yeah.
Oakwood and
I went and looked at every tree. And you know what?
Oh, yeah.
If NICE is gonna do it
Yeah.
versus
And take this
Yeah, we're totally
and our DPW having to do it.
We are totally good with it. They don't seem to be, NICE doesn't seem to be in a big hurry. I'm just saying, for the optics of it, maybe we wait to do those, the 50% ones.
Threw out doing a couple dangerous trees. It would only make sense for them to finish the
That's not, I don't care. Sorry, I don't, I don't care about NICE's convenience. I'm saying, we have a moratorium and we have a, you know, a level of pressure there, so.
I agree that those certain trees shouldn't be removed, though.
I still agree they should be removed. I just don't think they should be removed until the moratorium is lifted. That's all.
Thank you, Jesse. All right, speakers in communications. Anyone else? Anybody? All right. Closing that, department head report, Pat?
Police Department. Nothing really to report outside of, we did have the event last week with Bills and with the Buffalo Bills on Hallmark. And the patrol truck is now in service. And a reminder to folks that the winter parking ban is in effect, however, with the better weather, we've held off. We've just been issuing warnings. If the board or you would like to dictate otherwise, we can postpone, but we've just been doing the warning thing for now, just because
Yeah, we don't have snow on the horizon, although the lows for the next 10 days are projected to be right around freezing, so we have the option to rescind it if we need be. But why don't we just extend the we'll postpone the parking ban until, until it looks like we need to enforce it.
As long as people know that when weather does come, it will be enforced.
Yeah.
That's the catch, I'm postponing it.
Look, last year was good. We postponed it, what, another two weeks, maybe?
I don't remember if we did one on the front-end window last year, or if it was just on the back end, but we've done it at one point or another. And
It's common sense, right, for the public? If there's snow, then the ban will go into effect and that'll be it for the season. Hopefully, it's a long time before we need to do that.
And outside of that, nothing else to report.
Thanks, Pat. Jeff?
Yeah, we're continuing leaf pickup. It's been a rough leaf pickup season with the rain, snow, and wind, but we're still going until heavy snow falls. Next week, we will be starting the rest of the Christmas decorations, getting trees up in the circle.
Fantastic. Thank you, Jeff.
Also, I did walk, me and Shane did walk with Erie County on Friday about Maple Road. And there are some trees for their new sidewalk construction that I'm gonna have, I'm gonna walk with Jared and maybe I can get Jesse down there with us this or next week.
So when we first met with Gina and the county, I requested they put the sidewalk from that apartment complex down that side. And they were like, well, there's trees there. There's like some sort of power supply box, telephone pole. I don't know if there's a hydrant or not. And so they were not sure they were gonna do it, but the sugar maples there, like two of them have now come down and they're all
Silver maples.
Silver maples, sorry.
Yep.
Silver maples. Two of them have now come, been removed just from old age. And the rest of them are in pretty bad shape, so I'm glad the county's tweaking their plan and they're gonna put a sidewalk there, because there is folks at that complex that need to get into the village, including an individual in a wheelchair. Just make it easier for them as well and easier for pedestrians on trees that are already becoming dangerous.
Jeff, can you throw me onto that, too?
Yeah.
Thanks.
Absolutely.
And just to go along with that, if everything lines up quickly, the county thinks they might be able to get the bids out and do the work next year. If they can't get it out quickly because of some sort of holdup, it wouldn't be until '27. There's a couple places. There's one pine tree on the west side that they could leave, but they would have to move the sidewalk in between the pine tree and the house. It would still be in the right-of-way, but it would look like it was in the middle of the people's front yard. So I don't think the homeowners there would be that thrilled with that either, so we need to look at that.
Are they communicating with the homeowner?
Yeah, they're gonna talk to everybody. They would like our opinion. They would like, and Jeff, Jesse, and Jeff, and the arborist can go look at it and see what they think. And there's a retaining wall that's in the right-of-way that's falling apart that I've got to contact the owner and see what they would like to do about that. But yes, they are gonna extend the sidewalk from North Street all the way to the driveway to the apartments. There's some handicapped people there and everything that are forced to go into the road and scooters and wheelchairs and stuff, so that would be great.
Excellent. Thanks, Shane. Anything else, Jeff?
That's it.
Very good. Appreciate you. And all your work with the parade as well, you and your team. Rich?
Just make one note. Obviously, the code is changing at the end of this year. One of the things that was put on hold is de-electification. So we are waiting from the Department of State on how we're going to broach that, considering the existing code that they're going to be adopting does still have that included. But as of right now, that is on hold, so natural gas is still allowed. That's it.
Thanks, Rich. Shane?
The only other thing is our meeting with NICE last week. They did have a paper version of, they were hoping for a just an agreement. Maureen and I both were very explicit with them that it has to be in some sort of contract form. They're supposed to email us an electronic version of it, and we haven't gotten that yet. But they do think it's fine having a contract form with them with what our final agreement will look like. So as soon as they get that to us, Maureen and I'll add or remove whatever we disagree with and then send it to Chris to have him look over it and, and go from there.
Good. Thanks, Shane. Maureen?
Our tax software, the new software is gonna be installed in the next month, so it'll be ready for June. We are already preparing for this coming budget. And I was able to go to a negotiator's training last week. And I'm actually gonna be presenting at the Finance Officers Association on Thursday.
Congrats.
You know how much I like talking in front of people?
Yeah, practice your presentation now with us?
No, thank you.
We'll give you some feedback. How long is it, the presentation?
It's like 20 minutes of presentation and then about 40 minutes of questions.
Oh, wow. Good luck.
You got, you got that.
You'll be fine.
No worries.
You know this stuff.
All right, thank you, Maureen. Grace?
Oh, yeah, just to follow up on the deer discussion, so I had a couple conversations with a couple people, um, after reviewing the plan that the police department put together for the village. Um, I'm in agreement that I don't think it's a safe option for the village lots that we have. We've got too many children who run around in the village, who could be in the woods, you never know where they're gonna be. There's not enough space in the village for a bait and shoot program, per my opinion, and I believe the police departments as well. I reached out to the town board members, they're doing the doe permits this year, um, hopefully that helps alleviate some pressure on the village. I know I have a relative who lives on the village line and has had six doe taken off his property already during the bow and arrow season. But yeah, looking forward to seeing how that program works, and then the town was open to looking at a bait and shoot program and for next year if they so need.
Very good.
That's all I have.
Thanks, Grace. Molly?
I'm good.
Very good, Jeff?
Yeah, I just wanna, um, say publicly, I completely agree with Grace, so with regard to the bait and shoot program.
Thank you, Jeff.
Yep.
Ernie?
Also?
Kristen?
Uh, nothing tonight, thanks.
Very good, and Steve?
All set, I just wanted to thank Jeff and the DPW for helping with the flag down at Haven, it turned out great, thank you, guys.
Looks great.
And it was nice to have that all come to fruition. That's it.
Thanks, Steve, for doing it.
Yeah, thanks, Steve.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, Steve, I was there, you spoke eloquently, and I feel like you represented the village very well in your comments, talking.
Thank you.
About the charm and, uh, and the need to remember our historical lineage, so you did an excellent job and really appreciate you kinda staying with this and seeing it all the way through.
We have a new landmark.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're the rock.
Yep.
I thought it's sort of, I think it was Rachel said earlier, it looks like it's always been there.
Yeah.
And you know, I was concerned.
Wow, you did so much work, now it looks like it's been there forever.
I was concerned it'd be a little overwhelming when I saw how big Jeff and I were climbing on it. And then we picked it out, it was like, oh my God. It's like the Christmas tree, you know, they get so big when you cut it down, but you get it home, and you're like, oh, my.
I'm sure the kids climbing on that, but nicely done, nicely done, should be very proud. All right, I would add, congratulations to all the election winners, looking forward to working with them in the future. I appreciate the, uh, decoration committee, we've been meeting, uh, to freshen up our holiday decorations, and I think, uh, I think they're gonna look really great this year, I think we're doing East Aurora proud. Uh, special thanks to the Girl Scouts, um, who came out on Saturday and, uh, helped, uh, rewire the wreaths and test the lights and fluff the bows and garlands and all that labor that, uh, we need to make sure this, uh, this goes off every year, um, optimally, so thanks, thanks to the crew. Let's see. Yeah, the parade, I think parade was different than most of our parades, it was dark and it was crowded, but, uh, kinda got through it, and it'll be, uh, kind of a fun thing to see on the Hallmark Channel when that movie comes out, I think it's next week.
Saturday. Saturday.
Saturday?
Eight P M.
How, how big was the crowd, I was gonna come out and then the one was kinda lousy.
What do you think, Jeff, chief? Three, four thousand?
I would say, yeah, probably three thousand people at least.
Yeah.
Hallmark and, I keep wanting to say Disney, but Hallmark and the Bills, um, there was a little communication breakdown there with how that was supposed to go. Some of the things we dictated didn't go as planned, but we got through it, and I think the darkness was prohibitive of what they were trying to accomplish, I think a lot of things they wanted the folks to see, you couldn't see just because of time of day.
Yeah, it was dark, and so I think people were then trying to get closer and closer to the, the Bills and the actors to get a better look, and.
Yeah.
And it kinda.
We made it through it, I don't know when we'll have another movie premiere, so we're good for now.
Excellent.
I was able to watch it from, I was out of town, from the advertisers' live camp.
Oh.
So you definitely saw.
I did peek in on it.
As the end of the parade went, so did all of the people.
Yeah, again, there was a. A breakdown, the golf cart drivers were supposed to be told where to go, they didn't go to where they were supposed to go, and that created a little bit of a jam up, but, uh, we got through it.
When I was at the Educational Foundation Dinner, uh, their kind of award ceremony, two weeks ago, and they always do such a great job, and they do so much for the community. So, uh, hats off to all the organizers and the board members, the East Aurora Educational Foundation, they really do a lot, really do a lot for the, for the kids, uh, the students in the village. With that, um, I would like to ask for a motion to go into executive session regarding litigation. Moved by Steve, second?
Second.
Second by Jeff, um, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Yes.
Approved, we're going to executive session, we don't expect to vote on anything when we come out, we'll probably just adjourn. You're welcome to stay and come back in afterwards, or, uh, you can go home, but thank you for coming if you do not stick around.
Don't forget the, uh, boys soccer, cross country.
Oh, ah, damn it, you're right, wait, wait, wait. The East Aurora varsity soccer team won Class A states.
Wow.
Downstate for the second time in three years.
Third time, I thought, wasn't it?
Now they won, they won, um, yeah, my nephew's on the team.
Last year, two, three years in a row, they went to the tournament.
That's awesome.
Yeah, and they've won twice in three years. Thank you, Jesse. So congratulations to them, that really is, really is impressive.
I'm jammed up.
Did they?
Do you have time on Thursday?
I don't.
Fifteenth in a row?
I, I just.
Hi. Who are you? Do you have time on?